So yeah, so what are we, we're, this is one more.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call while speaking to order. Town Poppy Planning Board on October sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. I thank you all for taking the time to come out this evening. I'm Sue Smith, Chairman of the Planning Board. I do have three members not here tonight, but those in my right, Kevin Corson, our Board Secretary Sarah Lee Judas, again Sue Smith to my left, Carl Ferentz, Dan Prue, and far left, Dan Vargus.
What's his name?
Town Engineer John Dunkel, Planning Board Attorney Jamie Sutton, and our Code Enforcement Officer Tim Garth is attending in the back. So. If we could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic, which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
First, regarding our minutes from last month's meeting, we've all had a chance to review them. There's been a couple changes that have been submitted already. There's another change, clarification regarding the pivot energy regarding an easement. I clarify that they're proposing the an easement out of fifteen acre parcel that would be set aside for egg use and a front line protection act.
Yeah, I gotta add the part of good. Send an email, but I'll resend it so you have more minutes.
Okay. To attach it? Whole thing or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Other than that, were there any other changes or versions? There are none. I make a motion approved minutes as amended. Second, I'm sending my Dan in for the discussion. There are none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So it's opposed, most in passing. Our full agenda tonight. So first Perry Real Estate Holdings Broadfield Road subdivision. Schedule the public hearing for application for subdivision of land located at seventy-nine forty Broadfield Road, Manlius, New York, one three one zero four tax map, AB numbers. Zero zero four dot there zero three dash four four dot one. And zero zero four dot there zero three dash four nine. Representatives. And that's the, oh, yes. Do you have any updates? This last month's?
Yep. So I don't know if, after the last meeting, I made the changes that we discussed, and I'm not sure if you guys got revised plans. The new date on there should be September nineteenth.
Did we get to?
I can, I've got some hard copies. I can distribute it.
But not recently, but updated.
So as far as the final plan goes, really the only change made, we took off about anywhere we used, but it turned to both lots. Notes and laboring lots themselves. And then I also revise the spec plan as the driveway goes. We had some spot shots coming out on the end of the whole driveway. It's a kind of show. We're going to try to direct the water away from the road with the either side of the driveway. See, those are the areas of concern at the meeting.
Okay, with the?
I'm certain it drives me out my point. Having water on both sides, kind of sideways or?
Yeah.
You don't need a culvert?
No. But perhaps you would know, but it doesn't appear like there's a culvert driveway.
Well, the culvert isn't there because the driveway is right on top of the hill.
Right.
Piping in down the sides of the driveway to go one way. We want to cross the other lot on the other side. So most of that is completely taken away from that driveway. We had to do that to protect my aerobic leach field there in New York. That was part of the design of the leach field.
Okay.
So there isn't a lot unless it really pours that comes down that driveway now. There is a holding area on my side of the driveway that's up there. It's piped down around the corner and heads west. So as far as overall runoff, we've stopped a lot of it just with what we've done there. There's bigger concerns with the driveway.
And your, what are you?
My name is George Holden. I'm on the west side.
So I didn't, you know, we didn't have the information of whatever drainage they already had installed on the existing driveway. And then so everything we have, the contours were obtained from the online, what was available to the
I assume you're going to do something further up the hill to spread it as well. I haven't seen the new plan as far as how to move the water away from the driveway.
So really, just once we get down, once it starts dropping down to Broadfield Road, we just have the water pulling to the side and more or less running along the edge of the pavement out to Broadfield Road.
You really got to stop it before it gets to Broadfield.
Yeah, right now there's basically like a tilted speed bump in there that converts it into the current like that goes down.
Or kind of condition you're considering of moving.
This is what they make necessary improvements to.
Exactly. Me or the town highway superintendent needs to approve that. Driveway construction of it before it only permit with the issue.
Yep. So when the zoning board approved this, what was the language that they? Writing was about language?
They were concerned about having another driveway further to the west that would allow another channel for supply to hit Broadfield, and they said, don't do it. We're consolidating the access now to this existing driveway. And I'm just saying, you know, let's make this existing driveway as drain as friendly as possible.
And the driveway is the high point on Broadfield?
That's what they're saying. But I think it's, we need to go out in the field and see if a culvert's needed. If there's roadside ditch needs to be created to create positive drainage in both directions. My opinion, it's not something that should hold up the approvals on this because it can be volatile.
There is not a culvert on Broadfield now with an entrance.
Apparently they're saying, I haven't, I didn't see one. It's not one, yeah.
It's right on top of the hill. It's not.
Pretty close to the high point.
Okay.
If it's not exact, then you don't want to create a puddle on the, the outside a little bit. So I think we just need to take an infield look at it.
Maybe drainage is the biggest deal.
This is scheduled for a public hearing this evening. Sarah confirming that you received written?
Yes.
While we open the public hearing, we do have to do seeker for this project. Don.
You can. Something. And no significant environmental, this farm water, which will be mitigated.
There's a series of eleven questions for seeker. Lead Agency of Town Poppy Planning Board. I'll read each question. They may be, each may be answered either with a excuse me, a no or small impact may occur or a matter to large impact may occur. And this is based, these answers will be based on the information that has been presented to us and reviewed and gone over in research. So one, will a proposed action create a material conflict from an adopted land use planning or? Two, will the proposed action result in the change in the use or intensity in use of the land? Will even no or small impact may occur? Will proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? Again, a no or small impact may occur. Will proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area? No or small impact?
Agreed.
Will a proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit biking or walkway? No or small impact? Six, will a proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy? And it fails to incorporate reasonable, available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? No or small impact?
Agreed.
Seven, will the proposed action impact existing A, public or private water supplies? No or small impact? And B, public or private wastewater treatment utilities? No or small impact? Eight, will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources? Oh, or small impact? And will proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources such as wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, floor, and fauna? No or small impact? Will a proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? As Don has indicated, that anything to do with drainage toward the road could be mitigated. Will even no or small impact may occur? Number eleven, will proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? No or small impact? So based on these findings, I move for a negative declaration.
Second the motion.
Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries for a negative. On those findings, I'll make a motion to open tonight's public hearing.
Second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
The votes, public hearing is now open. If there is anyone here to speak at the Perry Real Estate Holdings. We'll speak one at a time. You'll need to state your name and address for us.
It's Philip Miller, reside at thirty-seven seventy Sweet Road in the town of Pompe. And I'm here at the friend for one second. Philip Miller.
One hour and so. And this thirty-seven seventy Sweet Road, Jamesville, New York, one three oh seven eight, in the town of Pompe. Lived here for approximately sixteen years. And the water we had this spring is more than I've ever seen. My culvert overflowed. You're making decisions upon existing character of this property. You're not looking at what potentially might occur in the future. I'm not sure why you made a negative declaration without first hearing the public. I guess that's your rules. I'm an amateur at this. I don't profess to have any real experience. I'm asking that you respectfully review the minutes of the June twelfth, twenty twenty-three Town of Pompe Zoning Board of Appeals Public Hearing, requesting the area variance in this manner, and consider what's said by the public at set meeting, and that your decision conformed with and effectuate what was intended and decided by the ZBA. Reported minutes of the ZBA states as follows, quote. The ZBA imposed the following condition. Lots one, two, and three will be serviced through easements from an existing driveway to lot two. Reason for this condition is to limit the amount of impervious pavement on lot three, which is known to have flooding issues, as expressed by the neighbors at this public hearing for the variances. I interpret this to mean that no other driveway is to be permitted. Consequently, I believe that this must also be a condition of any subdivision approval and binding upon all successors, heirs, or assigns, especially due to the fact that the property is currently for sale. As you know, the Town of Pompe subdivision requirements provide pertinent part that when a subdivision application is filed, that a state environmental quality review assessment form, an EAF, I think you call it, must be submitted. Short environmental assessment form question specifically, specifically paragraph number thirteen A asks, quote, does any portion of the site of the proposed action or lands adjoining the proposed action contain wetlands or defined regulated by a federal, state, or local agency? Paragraph number thirteen B also asks, would the proposed action physically alter or encroach into any existing wetland? Water box. Upon information of belief, the Honor Dog County Planning Board on April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three, reviewed your referral of this subdivision and opined that the, quote, West Branch, Limestone Creek, a federal wetland, and its associated flood plain and floodway lie to the west of the site. I hereby submit for your review flood zone reports based on FEMA flood insurance rate maps indicating that seventy-eight sixty-eight, seventy-eight sixty-four, and seventy-eight sixty-six Broadfield Road, that's Reisman, Burns, and Cavallini, which lie to the west of the site, are all currently located in the special flood hazard areas. Evidence at seventy-nine hundred Broadfield Road, which lies to the north of the site, has also testified before the ZBI as to his need for flood insurance and his concerns as to flooding. I'd like to admit to, I don't make any of this stuff up. I just pull it up from the computer. It's this seventy-eight sixty-eight Broadfield Road. Flood, special flood hazard area in. Seventy-eight sixty-eight, seventy-eight sixty-four Broadfield Road, special flood hazard, well, in. Seventy-eight sixty-six Broadfield Road, Manlius, but special flood hazard area in. I give you some a glattery. So if you have a question about how to read it, this might help you read it a little bit. The New York State Department of Division of Local Government Services, so we are local government. You're the service. And so applying that, quote, environmentally sensitive areas such as wetlands are increasingly being encroached upon from new development. As impervious services from development increase, the opportunity for water to naturally recharge through filtration is lessened. Again, repeat, the opportunity for water to naturally recharge through filtration is lessened. Man-made chances, man-made changes to topography may also redirect water settlement to an undesirable location such as neighboring property, end of quote. I believe that on September eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, your town engineer stated to Perry and Pat Reynolds of Ian Uzy and Rowens, that they make sure that the existing driveway doesn't drain and flush right out at the low point onto Broadfield Road. You've been talking about that a little bit tonight. In accordance with this current concern, have you sufficiently evaluated the environmental impact that could result from the proposed development? And can you conclude with a reasonable degree of certainty that there will be no adverse effect on the physical and environmental condition of Broadfield Road and the neighborhoods to the north and west of the subject site? You talked about Broadfield Road, but you didn't talk about the neighborhoods. So I guess you think everything's going to be okay. And I hope it will be. Because we're deferring to your judgment tonight to make the right decision. More particularly, will this new development, if approved, increase or redirect water runoff onto Ms. Reisman's property and her neighbors who are already in a special flood hazard area? You can look at what I just gave you. They're in a flood hazard area already. And this development may result in a change of the water where it goes. And it may just come down right into our, I don't know whether you might study, whether you even know this or not. Have you imposed adequate mitigation due to the proximity of the developments to the west bank of Limestone Creek? In accordance with seeker, it is believed that this matter needs further review and requires the preparation of the EIS, an environmental impact statement, in order to answer these questions and accurately determine whether the proposed development will result in a significant adverse impact on the environment. Thank you for listening, people.
Any else wish to speak? You can stay seated, but say your name and address, please.
My name is Susan Reisman. I live at seventy-eight sixty-eight Broadfield Road. And my house is the lowest point on Broadfield. And I get lots of water coming down in the edge of the road and on my back lawn and on my front lawn. But I have three questions. The first one is my well water. And will it stay clean and not be contaminated with the Perry development? I have not seen any studies or reports to ensure that this is true. The second is the drainage. And the water cools around the front and the back when there's a heavy rain. And I don't know how you can do what you say is that it's going to be okay or that it's adequate when you don't even know whether there's been a study to show how the water is going to flow. And the third question is about the, the, the right of way next to my property, which the zoning board said was not to be used. I just want to make sure that that is going to stay not to be used for whoever uses that property or whoever buys that property.
Is Limestone Creek just below your property?
It's on one side of my property, the, the west bank.
So that's where the water eventually gets to?
Well, it gets to there and then over the road and down the falls there. But it, it all rushes down and the culverts on the side of the road are not deep. And they all, and I've had them dug out, but they still are not very deep and they, and the water fills up and then it just goes into the front yard.
That's just the culvert on your property that you had dug out?
I, yes. I asked the county to come and dig it out once or twice. Since I've lived there, I've lived there about fifteen years. But again, it's not a very deep one. And it's, it's, I don't know whether you have the same problem.
No, Sue's culvert can't be very deep because the pipe that brings it down into the creek is too high. So it, the culvert in front of her house is probably about six inches deep. So it's not good enough depth of the pipe.
And from her culvert, it goes into a pipe that goes into the creek?
Yes.
Okay.
I do, yes. Michael Burns, seventy-eight sixty-four Broadfield Road. I'm on the other side of the creek from where Sue lives. I have two, I have two things to share. One is from me and one is from my wife who isn't able to be here tonight. I'm a former elementary school teacher of science. I am concerned about the environment very much. And I'm concerned that the two issues that the the county planning board questioned about and raised issues about endangered species and for the archaeological digs, they don't seem to have been acted upon, or at least it is nothing public that I've been able to find. So I would encourage those to be considered. My wife also asked me to read this to you. Dear Mr. Smith and Planning Board members, I'm writing to you about the parcel of land tax map number zero zero four dash zero three dash four four one on Broadfield Road where a parcel of land owned by Perry Real Estate Holdings was recently presented to the Zoning Board of Appeals. At that board, a shared driveway was approved by the Pompe zoning board, allowing just sixty feet of frontage rather than the two hundred feet required by the Pompe code. And the parcel was divided into two parcels and one parcel of land in the same area. Sold a small piece of Mr. Perry's property to the owner to bring it up to two acres. Since then, Mr. Perry has appeared before the planning board to build two homes on each of his parcels. As a landowner residing on Broadfield Road, north and west of Mr. Perry's holdings, I have concerns about building on this parcel without having town and private engineers assess the effects of the building on the properties at the lower levels below the property. Several of these properties are located in the flood zone and runoff would likely add to the water concerns. I strongly request that the board do its due diligence and require a new builder to assess these issues. Once buildings, wells, and leach fields are in place, it's too late for remediation. Consider me Karen Elburn.
Any else wish to speak?
Yes. My name is Charles Seffner. I live on Fraser Ford Drive, which is perpendicular to Broadfield. Four two seven five Fraser Ford Drive. I want to thank you, members of the board, for having this public hearing and the opportunity to speak. Thank my fellow neighbors for coming here and also Vargus knows me. Bargo was knows me because of the top of my block. I think he's very familiar with the layout of the land there. In fact, he developed and built many of the houses that are on Fraser Fur and on his street. I've lived at my house for the last fifteen years. And I know my house was built in two thousand and three, there in two thousand and seven. For the entire period that I've lived there, there has been no attempt to develop any of the property of the eighteen acres that's now in question by Mr. Perry. I assume that's for a reason. It seems as if Mr. Perry bought this land really unknowing that there are many issues that are attendant to developing this property. Some of the issues have been mentioned tonight. I am not an expert in land use development, but I am also a smart man and my colleagues are smart too. My neighbors are smart. I previewed as many of the public documents as I can review. Tried to research issues relating to Sika, to the obligations upon a missed board such as yourself and to all the issues that are attendant to making a issue in a variance by the zoning board and also your decision as to whether to grant the subdivision of this property. Frankly, I am somewhat startled that you folks just listened to all the criteria for a short assessment environmental form and each of you said that there would be little or no impact. I don't know how that's possible. I've looked at the record of this project as recently as this morning. I came here and looked in the file. I don't see any engineering reports that really speak to some of the issues that have been raised. There are issues relating to flooding, flooding on Broadfield, flooding on people's properties, issues that the actual code enforcement has said somewhat offhandedly on the last meeting on September eighteenth, that to make sure that at the edge of the property that it dips up so that water doesn't flow onto the Broadfield Road. As a form of mitigation, that seems somewhat ludicrous, that that would be a response to address the kind of flooding that comes down and if the neighbors have expressed. Parenthetically, we live at this point in time when, whether we like it or not, there's global warming and the nature of climate has changed. We've had increased rains, we've had increased floodings. And looking forward to this project, I don't see how the board can't consider the prospect of altering the eighteen acres. And so far, it's totally unclear how that will be altered on lot number two and lot number three and how that won't impact the issue of flooding, both on Broadfield Road and for the homeowners that live there already. And on the issue of road, on the road issues on Broadfield, right now, it's been identified that where this present access to lots two and three is going to be granted, the road on Broadfield slopes upright there. It's already dangerous there. There are school buses that travel that road. There is vehicular traffic that travels that road. There are conditions there where children maybe have to get off buses. You're talking about granting an easement or access to two eighteen, a total of eighteen acres of property, maybe just two homeowners right now. But you're talking about four properties using one road to get in there. There are garbage cans, there are mailboxes. There are the issues of people coming in and out of that in the morning, in the evening, in snowstorms, all of those issues. As far as I can tell from looking at the resolution from the county planning board that was submitted to you, is that certain road things need to be addressed by the Department of Transportation from Anadaga County before you folks can act on anything you are approving that. I haven't heard any discussion of that. There are issues, as far as I'm concerned, about fire access to what will be a new development there, even if it's two houses. Though there will now need to be access to those houses in the event of fire. Where will that be? How will that be part of this plan? The Anadaga County Planning Board has identified and in an advisory note stated to you folks that there are issues with endangered species in the eighteen acres, northern long-eared bats. January were declared to be a endangered species. There is no mention of any studies that have been issued with respect to that or how that will be impacted. The Anadaga County Planning Board has identified that there are possible archaeological sites in the eighteen acres. And I have heard no discussion, nor have I seen any documents that address archaeological issues for the eighteen acres. We know that there is a septic, there are septic and water issues there. And you yourselves have identified, I think your lawyer from the planning board has identified that we need to know, and Mr. Bargavas also said about building a septic tank. We need to have a perk test to see where that type of thing can be situated. We know right now that there are septic and water issues. We know that there is no site plan for where these houses might be located. You're talking about huge properties here. You're talking about splitting an eighteen acre plot into half, into two, basically. And there has been, and one of the sides of that eighteen acres goes along and is parallel to where this limestone creek is, although it's not right next to it. The other side of it runs up and abuts all of the properties up along Fraser Fur. And there is no, nothing in the site plan that again, you know, please correct me if I'm wrong, what is required to grant permits for building. I know that your lawyer has indicated that there's, that it is an agricultural zone and that to build a residential property, there sounds like there are certain hoops that have to be jumped through. I don't know what they are and I don't know if they've satisfied. But I do know that all of my neighbors, including myself, from the bottom of Fraser Fur, almost to the bottom of Fraser Fur, all the way up to the top, will be impacted by this nine acre stretch of land. Because the back end of that, or I guess it's the eastern end of it, abuts all of the backs of our property. And we have no idea of where these houses might be situated. Look, you know, we live in an environment where in the city, for example, and you look out your window and one day there's a clear view and the next day there is the building there. And if it's built properly and if it's built pursuant to regulations and meets all the codes and a non-arbitrary discretionary decision grants the use of the building, that's one thing. But from everything I'm hearing right now and from everything that I can discern from the information that this board has, I don't know how on earth you could grant this subdivision. Mr. Bargavas identified the zoning board decision, and I'm not sure if he also was a little bit surprised that this, and I don't mean to speak for him, I'm just responding to his question. The zoning board of appeals basically summarily decided that this was a, there were no environmental issues, that this was a type two action. I don't know how that's possible. They said the lawyer for the, for the zoning board of appeals said, all this is is a variance. All this is is to decide whether sixty feet of frontage is a none. I just invite you to consider that this isn't just a technical issue of how you're going to get onto this property. This is an issue of the use of the eighteen acres. If there is a subdivision, if there is no further information about exactly where these houses will be built, about whether they will be able to be connected to septic without disrupting the soil, about whether they will be able to have well water without disrupting the soil in a way that enhances the flooding. I went on to the, and this is somewhat ahead of myself, but I'll throw it in now. I don't know if you folks are aware, but that on the same day that Mr. Perry appeared before you last time on September eighteenth, this property, this eighteen acres was listed with Canaan Realty for sale for just under two hundred thousand dollars. So he's, Mr. Perry is asking you to make a decision about this property that might bind everyone in that community, even when his intention, he states, well, maybe I'll build a house there for myself and my daughter. Well, maybe I'll sell it. It sounds like he's moving towards selling it right now. And I don't know why you should be in a position to make binding provisions that might impact us all when we don't even know if that land is going to be bought by another developer or he's going to sell it, someone else is going to come before the board. Who knows? It just doesn't seem fundamentally fair. Just give me one second and just.
Time to ask for a second.
I appreciate your accuracy, I appreciate your accuracy on that, Mr. Carson. You know, I.
While you're looking for that, in terms of locating and building houses, that doesn't really come directly in front of this board in this application. That would be a permit that would be issued to build structure and they would go through all of the perk tests and locations of where wells would be and where the house would be sited on the property and, you know, corporate position. But we're not, not in front of us in terms of approving a specific housing structure that's going on that property. And whether or not his plans are different, we really can only act on the application before us, not on the potential he might sell it as a lot or whatever. That's really not something that we can bring in. We can just only act on the permit or the application before us.
I would say, I would say a couple of things to that, which I would address to the board. It's actually unlike many other applications because the, the type two action, just to answer that, any area variance, it's a type two, that's the law, right? So we don't make that up out of whole cloth. This particular action is an unlisted action because that's the law, but we do, I'll go through the appropriate review. I think that this board has paid an unusually great amount of attention to some factors that aren't necessarily part of subdivision, but about what kind of houses and what could be built and what the accesses would be. And there's a lot of notes on here and we can go over those again. Another thing that if this board thinks that the matter is particularly sensitive, there could be a condition that full site plan review would be required for the, any houses to be placed on these lots. That would be unusual, but it is something I know this board has been concerned about, about this subdivision. As a straight subdivision, the legal parameters have been addressed quite well because it's not so much what's going to be built on it. You do have to think about that things can be built on it. But there is already a condition about access, there's already a condition about the septic, which is something the county recommended and actually I think this board thought of even before the county said anything. So I would put that out there. John, did you want to comment on that?
Sure. So again, this is, this is just an application to divide a piece of property into two parts. It's not to develop the property. All of the comments that I've heard tonight relate to how is this property going to be developed once it is subdivided? And as Jamie said, it would be my suggestion, given the sensitivity here, that you request, if you're going to approve the subdivision, that you request oversight on how these two lots will be built so that you can then assess all of the concerns that the neighbors have had. We can't really assess drainage, we can't really assess any of the impacts that have been brought up tonight without a plan that shows, you know, how big your footprint is or going to be, how much impervious. We can't do that here. This is just a legislative act to subdivide the property.
And I do have a letter from the county DOT. They reviewed the site distance information prepared by the surveyor. And the Anadaga County DOT has determined that the future access for this proposed subdivision meets our site distance requirements. It's not a permit, but it does say it does meet the site distance requirements.
That's what that's dated.
That was actually dated December thirteenth of twenty-one, but it does refer to the correct parcel and the opening where the easement would be. On the, on this map, that if this was approved, if this filed, there are several notes on it. It refers to lot numbers, then it's a farm district.
Did you want to, is there anyone else wanted to talk at the public hearing and then move to discussion?
Yeah. Well, and I just, you know, if I might.
And I maybe got out of turn, but I wanted to get some of that too.
We could, like, within two minutes wrap it up because you have spoke for several minutes.
No, I know, and I want to be respectful to my, the other citizens in the room. I appreciate it. Maybe I can cut it short by just asking, is it your intention to vote on this tonight?
It's a discussion, it's a discussion we better have.
So potentially yes, but it's a discussion we'll have.
Sorry, so chances are yes, but it's a discussion you're gonna have.
It's possible that you could vote on it tonight. It's possible we could table it until the next meeting.
Yeah, so then, I mean, I can certainly cut the rest of my comments shorter if I knew that, for example, you hearing all of the concerns were willing to say, look, we're going to delay any decision on this until maybe we can get some further input from members of the community, because I do think that there are significant issues here. And again, I'm not acting as a lawyer in this capacity for this. I'm just acting as a citizen who is trying to do a lot of this on my own. And I'm just getting up to speed. I first learned of this from a certified notice in the mail. So that's why I would rather not be in a position of having the board make a decision and then having to engage with people about whether to bring some kind of legal proceeding in Article seventy-eight or something of the kind based on a claim that this was arbitrary and capricious, particularly on the seeker issue. So if I knew a little bit more clearly that you weren't going to be making the decision tonight, I guess it's your right not to tell me to do it, but that's kind of where I'm at.
For me personally, I, I think issue with the threat of legal action, if we make some sort of a decision tonight, I don't think that's helpful to anyone. So you certainly are entitled after we come to a position that if Article seventy-eight is something you want to do, that's fine. You can do that. But throwing that out to us, I think is just not a positive thing to do in a public hearing like this, the threat of legal action. But you're entitled to say that, I'm just giving you my position.
No, I appreciate that and believe me, it's, I'm not saying it as a threat, I'm just simply trying to. I have come to learn what are the possible remedies for an action by a board. I'm just stating that I have never brought in Article seventy-eight on any matter in my life. But I'm concerned and I just wanted to say that I hope the board will give more time to have more input if you feel that there are issues that really still need attention. And the last thing I'll say, and respectfully, is that on the latest map that I saw this morning when I came here, the notes in the map still seem to indicate that there are certain things that must be approved by the health department prior to conversion to residential use. There's the one note says that, another note says talks about the well, that's the main thing that I'm definitely seeing, there are other notes there. But the only thing that I guess I'm concerned about is it sounds like you're saying that, well, there are these other things, Mr. Hefner, that can happen and we may approve this, but don't worry because we'll have to consider those other things down the road. That this approval will be, any building there will be subject to further reviews or further tests or further studies.
Correct.
And that's.
Intingent on that.
Right, that's the part that makes me nervous as a citizen, knowing that Mr. Perry has put this property up for sale and that he's asking you to take some action here that's basically going to be left to somebody else who may buy the land and have different intentions. And then the whole process is going to happen again. That's, that's part of my concern.
But that's, but that's the process. And the other thing in the long term, it may turn out to be that this property is not buildable either. So, you know, for us to make decisions about something that may or may not happen is really not something that you can actually do.
Okay, so your assurance to us is that that process will be taken, will take place. If you, if you grant the subdivision that there's still going to be. you grant the subdivision that there's still going to be a further review to see whether this land is buildable in fact.
Absolutely.
Beats all the codes and requirements, et cetera.
Absolutely. And any house that's built in, in the town would be subject to all of that.
And issues about mitigation relating to Miss Reese's property and any other flooding issues and town roads, if all those things will have to be attended to before any houses can be built.
I, I believe those things will be looked at. Absolutely.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
One more. Name and address, please.
My name is Pauline O'Leary. I'm speaking for myself and my husband, Michael. We own the property at four two six nine Fraser for Drive. My concerns, I echo the sentiments of those who've spoken already. The landing question directly abuts the back of our property. And it is a hot habitat for at least seven deer. We have several coyote dens back there. There is a bunch of other wildlife. My concern with the subsequent development, the environmental impact on the habitat for the wildlife, including the long-eared bat, which is an endangered species. I'm also concerned that any building or removal of the forested area behind our home would perhaps displace this wildlife. Number two, we purchased our property specifically because it was a landlocked piece and we have a quality of life which we appreciate with woods in the back. The back of our property falls about thirty feet into a ravine. At the base of our ravine, probably a half the year it's wet. So it is a wetland, whether it's declared that by environmental groups or not. But I think that any development there could adversely impact certainly the value of our property, our quality of life, and the habitat for existing species. The, I also want to just put on record as saying that without formal review, I would disagree with the board's vote on points two, three, nine, ten, and eleven on the seeker. Simply because there appears to be a lack of information or at least information that's publicly available. And I'm concerned as well about how a fire on any property in that parcel would be addressed. There is no public water. There's a lot of dead brush back there. If there's a fire and inadequate fire control, there's nothing to stop those flames from coming up and destroying the properties on Fraser Fur. I do also want to go on record as having a concern with, and I know this isn't your, it was a zoning board of appeals that made this decision. I have a hard time understanding when the code is two hundred feet of frontage for her house. How sixty feet is going to be adequate for possibly four homes? Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah. Thank you for letting me speak over here. Some of the Monique Choudhury. I'm one of the relatively new residents at Fraser Park. I live at forty two sixty three Fraser for Drive. It goes up as lot thirty three in your records. So most of my concerns have been addressed by my investing neighbors and the very young, right? Neighbors that we have. There are a few things that I'm concerned about. I bought the property a year ago with what, you know, Miss Leary pointed out. One of the issues is that it's a wetland, whether we accept it or not. My concern is once, let's say the property is built up and once, and you know, I, what I gather is that the Perry property is on the east side of the limestone creek. Question is, how does that impact the water drainage? Does that convert the back of our property into a swamp land? Or does it cover foliage? Because I think we can all agree that a lot of erosion in the soil is actually prevented by the foliage cover that we have. And as you will see, that the, the quality of the soil in this area is classified as being erosion. If there is essentially destruction of the foliage cover in the back, how does that impact the erosion of the soil from Fraser Fur and further on? So that is probably a long-term view that we have to take. Thank you all for your attention.
Thank you.
Yes, my name is George Holden and I own the property seventy nine thirty two Broadfield, which is the west side of this right away that they're trying to add driveways to. And I have a couple of concerns. I've been there forty years. When I moved in, we did have drainage issues. We've worked through most of that. Case just at a mouth of the driveway. I don't have any idea what the latest plan was. I haven't seen the latest plan that they have for drainage. I do have a leach field in there that has to be protected. My well is in there, obviously. And the driveway is my biggest concern. I have I, I go back forty years there. And it's my understanding from one of the developers that's no longer part of Spruce Ridge, that that drive, they, they tried to bring an entryway from Spruce Ridge to Broadfield Road, and they were shot down. That's right across from the, the one that they're trying to use now for my driveway. They were shot down for site distance by the county. And this was again forty years ago, roughly. I, I did a FOIA request to the town. I haven't heard yet. They were going to dig into that and find out whether that was true or not. I know that they forced them to put a cul-de-sac in up there when they wanted to put an entryway on. Now, if they'd let them put an entryway on, they weren't even asking for room for trash cans or mailboxes. It was all going to be back into the development. When my driveway was approved, well, I was kind of grandfathered in, I guess, but at the time I moved in, let's say, the trash man would come back right up to your door and they would take the trash right from your garage and put the cans right back and we never had to deal with anything. Now you have to take the trash cans to the road, which is understandable. But due to the contract we have, they want three feet roughly between the trash cans. If you have four houses there, that's eight trash cans. That's a better part of fifty feet. By the time you spread the trash cans out with five to six feet on center. I find that very difficult to deal with. The driveway is, again, I've been there forty years. The driveway is very difficult to plow. We end up just, I usually do with a snow blower. You can't really plow uphill very well, and it's in a ravine type thing, so you can't plow to the sides because you lose all your site distance. And you don't have enough to begin with. So then the guy that you hire, he gets the right idea to turn and plow across the street, which is illegal. So there's no real way to handle it other than with a snow blower. So when I come home, sometimes I have to gently stick my car in the snowbank. Just get it out of the way. Leave it idling so it doesn't freeze in and then go snow blow the driveway and get the car out. Well, that's fine if it's just me or me and another person. But if you have a bunch of people trying to use that driveway and they can't get off Broadfield Road and there's no site distance, that's a huge problem. Because it's my understanding that Pompey wants nothing to do with the maintenance on this, right? As far as making it a road, accepting you don't want any responsibility for plowing, right?
Well, it's not a road, so.
Right. Yeah. Okay. So that then leaves it to the four people on the driveway. I'm about ready to retire. I may go to Florida for a few months and I won't be sitting in sunshine worrying about the driveways block. So that's, that's a big issue. It's not such a big issue when there's two houses on it. When you put four houses on it, now you got all the trash cans. You got four mailboxes and it's only going to be a matter of time before the trash truck stops. Put all these trash cans on and somebody drives around them and gets clobbered right there in a head on. We've had accidents there. It's also my understanding that the county shot that entrance down for development and approved only the west entrance to that property. So I would like to, I'd like to see the letter that they sent. That was December twenty one that that letter was? Is Mr. Perry on the property then?
Letter was sent to Mr. Reynolds.
So if I could clarify the letter, at the time that was done, the lots were numbered. The approvals is for a new drive on that western entrance. The county wasn't going to give us approvals for an existing drive because it's an existing drive. They can't keep us from using that existing drive.
Did they study that at all?
There was no site distance sound, but what can they do? They can't stop them from using that driveway.
No, but if there's, if there's a site distance conflict already, and then we put trash cans, old buses.
So our best way to mitigate that was pushing the driveway out to twenty two feet wide. Now, i- if it's a site distance issue, four houses aren't using that driveway, then certainly it should be an issue for two houses using that driveway.
Certainly is. That's my point. It is.
Yeah. So that's part of our plan. We're expanding that driveway twenty two feet width, similar to what you would see at a commercial access to allow two cars to travel in and out.
What's some, are there any other public comments?
A woman number first.
I just have a brief question. My name is Christina Tom. I live at forty two fifty seven Fraser for Drive. I mean, I believe Mr. Holden has answered number eleven. That is a yes and not a no. And my question is, what resources or information did you use to answer all of these of the no? Was it just?
Well, to be clear, it's not a no. It's, it's, it's small impact.
Excuse me. I mean, one person being injured from that entrance being so short. I don't think that's a small impact. So I, I just believe that number eleven would be a yes. So I'm just curious what information you used to answer these questions. Because I was also very surprised that it was so that these were answered today.
Multitude of information that's come before us. This whole project has been between our board and the zoning most of this year, if not before then.
Yeah.
There are EAF forms submitted to us with research on that. We also looked to our engineer for comments and input on other aspects of things also. Input coming in, there's you do have to understand on the, or the seeker that you have a spectrum of no or small impact or medium to large, and it's a balance of the scale. We're not saying that everything was flat out. No. We recognize that there could be a small impact with it, but in deference to what a medium or large impact would be. You know, if somebody told us that this was going to be the next Walmart going in here. Yeah, that would be a medium to large because the volume of traffic going in and out, just as an example.
So is this answered based off of just dividing the plots or is this based?
What we are, what we are considering is a subdivision, basically a two lot subdivision. That is what has been presented to us. There are also notes on this map that if it's approved and filed, that there will be no further subdivision of lot numbers two and three. John, our engineer would like to address some of your question there.
Fire the seeker votes and get out of this state. This is, this is a two lot subdivision. So we're looking at the action before the board that we're doing this by a matter of review on is taking a piece of property and dividing it into lots. It's not developing yet because we don't know how it's going to be developed. That's all another process. So looking at some of the environmental issues, wetlands, yes, we know there are wetlands on the property, but simply dividing up a wetland into two pieces, even if it was all wetland, there's no impact to that. Only the impact only comes when it's developed. The traffic threshold, the threshold by, by seeker regulation, the threshold for a large traffic impact is a project generates more than a hundred more vehicles per hour. Anything less than that is a small, a small, I'm saying a small impact. The long-eared bats, yes, this is all within the range of the long-eared bats. They live in Jamesville Quarry and they fly out fifty miles from there during the summer. The conditions for any type of development in long-eared bat habitat is you can't cut down any trees during the roosting season. They don't live on this property. They live in the quarry. So any condition for endangered species being among bats would be that no tree cutting can be done during the roosting period of the summer. So these are all things that the board has taken into account. I know they went through it really fast. But it's all stuff that we've looked at in detail. The floodplain issues, the floodplain issues for the properties that were noted here are all related to limestone creek, not from rain, it's a gradient of that. So again, these are again, issue, all these issues need to be looked at. Archaeological sensitivity, yes, this area is in an archaeologically sensitive area. So any soil disturbance needs to go through a review process of that. But again, this is just for topping a piece of land into two pieces. And as again, I, I'm going to state this again, it's my recommendation to the board, hearing what we've heard tonight is that you retain review of any development that occurs here where these questions can be evaluated. We can't evaluate them now because it's simply a legislative act to create two lots out of one. And that's why we're, we're developing this list of conditions that are already on the plan and I, I can expect that that will increase. It's on what we've heard and what you will consider too.
Man in the green vest, one who wanted to speak first.
Um, yes, my name is Daniel Reesman. I'm Reesman's son. I, I appreciate the statement of the engineer as well as when the ZBA was considering the variance. These are, these are very specific things that are before you. But the entire scope of the project is what the concern is. And the decision for a variance or the decision to subdivide a flat, a plot is contingent on what the site plan is, is contingent on where the houses are located. These things matter to not only the builder who's going to be building this project, but it matters to the residents that have already spoken. And you, you've mentioned EAF forms and you've mentioned some kind of water study. I don't know whether, like, other things related to this project. I don't know whether the public has had access or even knowledge that they even existed. You, you you are one hundred percent right. You're, you're dealing with a legislative action to divide one property into two separate properties. However, by virtue of doing that, and then what happens next with the site plan, they're all interrelated. And I don't see how, just the same way, I don't see how you could have done seeker before you took into account the public's comments. I don't see how the ZBA could have made a, a decision about the variance before they fully understand what's going to happen on that property. And it includes not just the driveway that runs alongside this gentleman's house, but you know, it's not like that driveway is going to end at the end of his property. It's going to go through the entire development. And it's going to impact not only the people to the west of the property, but it's going to impact the people behind the property or alongside the property. And the water needs to go somewhere. Water goes downhill. And the low point just happens to be my mother's house. And the creek overflows because the water is coming, you know. And the creek overflows because the water is coming, you know. I mean, that creek goes through not just the ton of Pompeii, ton of Manlis, into the Erie Canal. So on and so forth. Water goes downhill and with, without fully understanding. What is gonna happen when those driveways go in? When the houses get built? How is it gonna disrupt things? As a whole thing, I don't see how you can make. A, a secret determination, let alone a subdivision determination, and I said it to the ZBA. A variance determination, and we haven't even gotten to the site plan. So I, I think the, the question that was already asked about, um. I think the information needs to be available. I think, I think people need to. Have the opportunity to understand how it's gonna impact their homes. And, and we understand that. The people in Fraser Fur bought their homes and that, that property was vacant. And whoever owns that property has. The right to develop it in whatever way they want, provided that it's within the code. And hopefully they're going to be mindful neighbors. And if they do take down some of the trees and some of the screening, that they put something back up. That's appropriate. That doesn't impact their quality of life. But I think the, the bigger picture is that all these things have been presented to these boards as, as individual. Things, but they're all together. They're all interrelated. It's all connected.
Is there anybody else who has not yet spoken? Okay, um.
I had just one other quick thing.
Yeah, I'm literally thirty seconds to speak on this. Like, well, I appreciate uh your comments. I think, and I'm sorry to put it out this way. I think that was slightly patronizing. I think none of us are making the comments on the basis of drawing virtual lines on a piece of paper. It's predicated upon the fact that there is a real possibility of some building coming up, some construction, impact, and whatever the case may be, which impacts. The water flow and everything else that follows from it. And also like environmental impact, like let's consider mosquitoes if there's a big swamp plant in the back. That doesn't, that's not a small environmental impact in any. That's it. That's my case.
Just uh one other thing, when my son was growing up through school. The school district came out and they looked at the site, and they refused to let him cross the road there because of site distance. So he had to stay on the bus another hour, ride up through Pompeii and come back and be dropped off on the other side. So there is, everybody that's looked at it doesn't like site distance. And that's, you know, just another thing to deal with. Apparently, the county hasn't looked at the, the proposed driveway other than that it exists. So they don't have any say in it or something, so I guess it's all up to you, but they did approve the lower driveway, the western.
Are there any other people who wish to speak on this tonight?
Yes, if there's no one else that wishes to speak, I suspect we could close it.
Move to my close public hearing.
I'll second the motion.
Discussion, always motion to close tonight's public hearing, all in favor?
And just before we move on, so we take all of your statements seriously. You consider all of these things. We've been living on this thing for a long, long time up here. And uh, everything you say, we, we, we weigh that uh in, in our decision. Um, we also are bound by. Um, what we're tasked with, which is the, the proposal in front of us, as John said, is cut a piece of property into two parcels. And yes, things may happen down the road. We don't have a crystal ball. We don't know what they're gonna happen, but hopefully our code enforcement office. Uh, and the town can be strong enough when those things happen to control that. Building of those houses and that development. So as to not have it impact anyone else. And it sounds like there's some impact going on now. That possibly the town could get involved in mitigating some of that, maybe the, the. trenches in front of your property should be deeper. I don't know what the utilities are there, but those are things that. Um, maybe the highway department in the town of Pompeii. Can address some of those things because it sounds like without, even without this development, there are some existing issues. Probably shouldn't be addressed. County then to have the county there to address those issues if they are a problem at this time.
I was under the impression that letter. For to this driveway.
It's the other driveway.
Even that, and given that, even though it isn't an existing driveway, the proposal is to have. But I would suggest that we get the county to reevaluate. That driveway as of four, serving four lots instead of two. To confirm or not confirm that if you were for a driveway with more use.
And who notifies the county on that? Do we? The applicant?
This.
As a request.
Right, right now it serves two. And we wanna know if it's adequate to search for.
Yes, site distance. I, I, I'm sorry, I thought that letter applied to. They looked at it and applied to this entrance.
Just to clarify though, I mean, it serves the three lots. That's what they're using to access the uh, the existing parcel. Right now, side drive. Yeah.
Oh, we should, yeah, we should have that one evaluated because there is some. Topography there that may have an impact.
Also to look at the drainage.
But can we condition it, James, just by saying, um. No construction is gonna take place without a grading plan being approved by the town engineer.
And the county.
When sure.
And they got to meet for the road.
Well, for the, the houses, you know, like in the town of Anadog, I'm getting a building permit.
I don't know if I want that full responsibility for making environmental, all environmental decisions.
So another way around that workaround would be doing building envelopes. And show within that envelope, this is how we're going to address the drainage.
If you don't wanna have site plan review of the development each lot as a condition of getting a. That's what I'm suggesting.
They come back here for plan.
Rating plan, a drainage plan, an erosion control plan, um, and we look at it in depth.
You folks understand what we're talking about here, that they, if they were going to build a house, they would have to come again before this board, so we could determine. And, and have our engineer and our attorney determine whether or not. It, it works.
Having said that, I think that the issue of the site plan still, of the site distance still might uh need to be addressed.
Absolutely.
I would suggest that for the subdivision either, because if you don't have site distance there, even though it is, you gotta put it there.
Absolutely.
If it's not safe, if the county deems it not to be safe, then subdivision doesn't apply.
Right.
If you come back and get to see if it works, do you have a public hearing on that or a set?
Well, uh, it's up to you if you wanna keep the public hearing open.
Because uh, yeah, what we're asking for is the letter we have addressed. A different driveway than we thought it did, and so we're gonna ask the county to come back in and reevaluate that driveway. And its appropriateness for a four lot subdivision plus site distance and, and uh. Drainage and everything else, and, and hopefully that gets the county looking at the drainage again out there.
Wait, but can I just clarify, did you mean like next month or when they come back for a site plan?
When they come back for a site plan and they're asking for you to.
Public hearing.
Do it. Are you gonna have a public hearing?
Yeah, yes.
If, if you make that a condition.
Right, right. We make that a condition that when they come back, it would go through the same process. We notify the neighbors and have a public hearing. For the building would commence and we would do the site plan review.
That's, that sounds good. Uh, let me ask you, what are you doing about the road next to her house? It was my interpretation that the BZA said that was not to be used as a road for ingress and egress. For the three lots. Is that what your position is gonna be?
Yes, yes, we already determined that, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, that's been determined.
Is there, oh wait, is there a road there at all?
No, no, but there's a, there's a sixty.
I mean, but it's, but there's no road.
No, no, but we wanted to say that that could not be used as an entrance.
Four persons in perpetuity, like from here on, like you're gonna be part of the subdivided for warhouses in that area, should that come.
If, if this is the, if this subdivision is approved, what we're looking at is. The current access point. Only. What, one, okay, two more would go on it, and then Mr. Holden's. That would be it. There's a statement on here. There would be no further subdivision allowed. There would be no more houses.
Thank you.
It is a condition.
That's.
All right, does everybody else talk? Go ahead.
Just a point of clarification. I think the frustration that we as neighbors are having is that when we went to the zoning board of appeals. To express some of these same concerns, we were told, oh, no, no, we're just looking at the easement. Where you have to bring your concerns is the planning board. So we're at the planning board. And what I'm hearing is, oh, no, we're only gonna look at just the division. But what, what's uh. Mr. Reesman said that for all of us, it's the project that matters. And it's very difficult for us to wrap our heads around the piecemeal approach. When at the end of the day, it's the project and what's gonna happen, because each little piece, we can't do this unless, can't do this unless. And all of a sudden, we're all the way over here.
Right, but we, we can't look at a house being built unless someone is going to build the house.
So I understand that, but I guess what we need to understand is who is the final decision-making body about what can actually happen on these parts?
We've just determined that, you know, we're, we, we can approve the subdivision and then we're gonna have them come back to us. When they determine that they're going to be building. A couple of things just. For my position and what I'm hearing and I wanna throw out. Is I, and I've heard it a lot up here, is that, um. We have this beautiful backyard with these woods and this nice coverage and whatnot. And um. We've had people come before us that have showed us pictures of a view shed of three thousand acres and they didn't want somebody to put up a windmill. I said, well, you need to buy the three thousand acres. So to protect something behind you that you don't own is a difficult thing to do. Just to, to throw that out there and, and we have the explanation of the bats and the deer. And I have plenty of deer in my backyard. I wish I didn't because my dogs get ticks and the ticks get on me and it's a problem. So uh, yeah, the deer are not somebody, something that I'm, they're great to look at, but not to get too close to. Yes.
I hope you understand that we're, we're not just. Bunch of snooties like, oh, our backyards are gonna be destroyed. I, I love going through the woods, you know? I'm a New York City kid, but I moved here with my wife because I love the woods.
Yep.
But when I go back there, it's a blood zone. I, I, all I'm concerned about is if Mr. Perry builds this house at the top of nine acres. Yep, that means all clear down below that. That's really what, and, and to let you know how I got on the board, is they were gonna develop on my street and I brought an article seventy eight. I know all about it.
And so I think we're all in agreement here that we are not voting tonight. There's a couple more issues that we want. Answered, uh. How he was.
Jamie, we talked briefly about reopening the public hearing. Was that a necessity?
Well, if you wanna keep it open, then I think you need to reopen it and hold it open to the next meeting if that's what the chair wants.
I, I, I think with all that we've heard tonight, I would make a motion that we reopen public hearing.
Favorite?
Hi.
Hi.
See, you guys have an impact on us.
Thank you all very much.
And as a point of clarification, um, I was not the developer of Spurs Rich. I could take credit, but. Whatever you did, you did a good job.
I, I'll make a motion that continue uh this hearing until next month.
Second that the meeting date will be.
And, and then our codes officer send an inquiry to the uh town.
County about the site. Let them know what, what is gonna be used as a driveway. Hi. We are trying to publish everything on the town's website, so all will be available. Seen this? All seen this map? It's dated December nineteen. I have my copy if you share it.
Can you have Kathy's name so you can pick it up at the town clerk's office?
He goes to the gym.
Yeah, well, he also works with my. He was friends with Bob who used to work for him. Yes, yes, and he's doing well down south.
Can all the other doctors?
And we still have another. We have more issues to address. If you're going to chat on this issue, please take it outside so we may continue, please. Thank you all.
Folks, folks, we still have a meeting going on.
Next on the agenda, Lockheed Martin Corporation site plan review, public hearing for site plan review on proposed construction of a. One thousand and eight foot square building used to accommodate the Syracuse Range facility equipment located at thirty two fifty four Windy Hill. Manlis, New York.
We go from my neighborhood to yours.
Yes.
X I D zero one five dot dash zero two dash twenty two.
Mark Chambers of C N S Engineers. Um, I think I had a couple of clarifications from the last meeting. Uh, one was the address. I still think I have this wrong row with the property.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a mail.
Yeah.
It said that's the mailing address, but actually it isn't.
Yes, I'm confused with that a little bit. The mailing address is that, so anyway.
And we're in a Casanova School District for Casanova with Madison County phone.
Yeah, yes. Okay, so, and then one of the other questions, they wanted, one of the board members wanted a. Overhaul to see where the actual building was in relation to the property.
Yep.
Um.
Now I understand.
That's about it right there.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's very helpful.
Yeah.
So that's after you did the uh. The uh, what was the, the? The dome or?
It's this one here, this one's, this one right, the new one right here. Not right where, yeah.
But actually, you're gonna be tearing.
Yeah.
Reducing the impervious.
Well, there's, there's actually an existing radar, uh, foundation and steel that, that was. Basically disassembled the top portion of it a few years back, just staying in that same footprint of that. Um, it's, it's all, it's all pavement all the way around it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
No change in the.
No change in purpose.
No, no.
Exactly.
Can you also tell me what's going on in the classified section that says it's classified?
Um, and that was it, I think those were the only two spot items as far as the last meeting, I believe.
And it's a thousand square foot on a slab.
One thousand eight on a slab on grade.
Yep.
Foundation system.
What's coming out?
There's, well, right now, there currently exists the foundation and the, the. Superstructure above that that used to house a radar.
Right.
That's, that's getting taken down, the radar is gone up on top.
Yep.
The rest of the steel's coming down, the foundation.
It's gonna be somewhat in that footprint.
Yeah, right in that, right in that footprint.
And we did say. Town property, well, yes, so.
I was listening to a video the other day, I, I used to.
For someone. I think Deb especially was asking, seeing she's not there, but it's her property.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm a bit confused with the wall, she got the wall and it was the property line.
And you have a fence beyond that, correct? There is a chain link fence from like nineteen forty.
There's one right down there.
Yes, yes, that's, yeah, yeah.
I believe they didn't kinda see.
No, I chased my dog through there last winter. Be more of a jog. Um, but yeah, that, that chain, that's, I don't know the conditions, it's old.
It's old.
Yeah.
Did you have any comments on our issues? Even I. Seeker. Public hearing for site plan and we will go through. This project. Hope like our speed is quick to start. It's an information that's been presented to us. Research on a town road, our town engineer has reviewed this also. Uh, short environmental assessment form part two for seeker, series of eleven questions. Again, the answers may be no, we're small impact or moderate to large impact. Go through and have the board decide on these, number one, will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan? Or zoning regulations? No or small impact, this is on the site that is approved for this type of, um, usage. Number two, will the proposed action result in the change in the use or intensity in the use of the land? Again, no or small impact. Awesome square foot building, uh, this. Uh, is pretty small.
Agreed, agreed.
Number three, will the proposed action impair the character quality of the existing communities? Say no or small impact. Will proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that cause the establishment of a critical environmental area? Now, small impact. Number five, will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic? Or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit by either walkway? Will proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation? Or renewable energy opportunities, no or small impact?
Agreed.
Will proposed action impact existing public or private water supplies? And will it, it's impact existing public or private wastewater treatment utilities? No or small impact at both?
Agreed.
Proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic archaeological, architecture or aesthetic resources? Uh, no or small impact?
Agreed.
Will proposed action result in an adverse change in natural resources such as wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora and fauna? No or small impact? And will a proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion flooding or drainage problems? No or small impact? Eleven will proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? No or small impact? Based on these findings, I move for a negative declaration, the Lockheed Martin Site Plan Review.
Second the motion.
Kevin seconds, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of a negative declaration?
Hi.
Any opposed? Carries?
Will Earth cause a windy hill road? Are we got it from, yes.
Okay, uh, I make a motion to open tonight's public hearing.
I'll second the motion.
Second by Kevin, any discussion, always all in favor? Any, any post? Public hearing is now open.
All right, all lovely, three, two, two, nine, Windy Hill Lane. I own the adjacent properties. I've got four part parcels up in that area, up on the corner there. Um. I have to disagree with. That it doesn't change the fundamental use of that property. Been a while since I've been up there. On site, but I was an engineer and it was my understanding that it was a test facility. Not a training facility. And to expand the use, being a training facility. Does impact. The road, the amount of traffic that we're going to see, the hours of traffic that we're gonna see. Obviously, I don't know all of the details of your contract. Right now, we have. Uh, a fair amount of traffic from just the, uh, development testing and the production testing. But if we add a training facility into that area. Um, it's, it's going to move the number of hours of that sort of train, of people coming and going from the site. And we already have issues with. The amount of traffic on the road. And we're having, you know, I, we just added two more kids on the road, so it is a concern. Not only the dogs, but the kids also. It's, is our, is my concern, um. What size equipment are we talking about, right now we bring twenty ton trucks down the road?
In address.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
But I think we bring twenty ton trucks down the road, uh, there's a new project. Uh, is this project, who is the project for? Um. But those are the, that's essentially. The problems with traffic. Safety aspects of this. Uh, I don't know which agency is, you know. Is putting this project together. But is there a license involved with that, is it a reduced power for this radar or for this, uh? Um, laser system? Uh, is there additional noise that we're gonna have up on the hill because of this, um? Uh, system coming in, right now we put up with standard bands on the back of your radars. And they're a high pitched wine, and just recently we've added another home to the, to the environment up there. Walk the dog at night and it's really high, um, and it's broke, you know, it's, it's varying on a. I, uh, probably a. I don't know, five second frequency. You know, the variation is manmade, it's not something that is coming out of our, um. Wood, out of my woods coming down the hill at me. Um. How many production units are we talking about if you're running production tests up there? You know, there's just a lot of different parts to this, we're expanding, you know, like I said, we're taking this. With a new system coming in, not that, you know. I, I understand business has to go on up there, but. The road, um. Is showing signs of wear. And if we're bringing in another large, uh, program with large equipment. We're gonna have to, you know, take a look at what's gonna happen to our road system. Road, my house. That's my concern.
The, the, the building is the, the up activity taking place inside the building?
Yeah, the activity is actually inside the building, there's two, uh. Access, or should I say doors that open up somewhere, sort of say like the two window sizes, then, then the laser will do the, or shoot for the targets. I open the cas side.
Over on the other side, yeah, okay.
And the, the equipment that actually, they, they sit on tables, so they're very, very small equipment. Uh, about the size of that table right there, um. Very easily movable, so there's stuff that's, that's heavy as far as that goes, the equipment that for the laser testing is gonna happen there. Equipment's very, uh, light, not, I don't know, not like, not like a, you know, a huge transformer coming in.
And, and so the noise will, will be in the building.
You always shoot out, you're never receiving a back.
Right, so I was saying.
It has no, is a receiver the radar signal, so. Um, increased power requirements, I know the. Red brought up power a few years back.
Right, well, the, actually the power that we're trying to introduce to this project is actually the power that's, that was utilized for that existing radar.
Okay, which is.
Actually, yeah, we're actually connecting into that, uh, electrical panel right along the wall that's there, right where that. The, the power is used for that old radar.
Right. So it should be a wash.
Correct.
Power. They're coupling the power off of the radar, that's what you mean? The radar is gone.
Radar is gone, we're taking that out. Part is, uh, a training facilities will chew this, we're testing the radar systems there. They're, they're, it's just like the other equipment, they're testing it to make sure that it works properly and in fashion so that they can sell it to the government.
Okay, so you're, you're like training people how to use it out there.
Right, they're already trained folks that know how to use them.
Yeah. Okay, so we're going by, um.
In our minutes, involves a thousand and eight square foot building that's going to house their laser program training slash testing facility.
In terms of the road, Renee, just a, a question that, um, I know most of, yeah, just most of your B R or. His predecessor would come up and they'd look at the road and they, they make some repairs, but there's some pretty heavy equipment that comes up. That delivers those, um, portable radar units, I call them portable radar, they're on a very, very heavy. Gassy, what do they weigh, those radar, they're a lot.
Radar themselves, it's, it's not too bad, it's the whole train of moving all of them there, it's, it's supposed to.
Yeah, yeah. So it, it's.
You might wanna check with B R on whether he thinks the road can withstand that kind of weight problem, but.
Well, this, this project isn't gonna see that way.
Yeah, but I'm just talking about the traffic, I, I, I know you're not gonna have it with this, but I just bring it up, Paul makes a valid point, is the road's taking a pretty good beating with big. Trucks, but, uh, I know that's a, a different. Issue, but I will check with B R on that.
Mike Karolik, thirty-two, twenty-eight, Windy Hill Lane. Oh, we went through this. Last time, when they wanted to do, uh, building and stuff up there. And we were told that, uh, they're only gonna use the blacktop, the existing blacktop and add on to that. There will be no concrete trucks or anything going up there at all. Well, needless to say, we were told wrong. Because they had concrete trucks going up there and they did a lot more than what they were going to do. So, is this meeting gonna be the same that we're at now, they're telling us one thing? And then there's gonna be a change? They're just gonna add on or do whatever they wanna do?
That's when they put the dome up?
Yeah, you know. No, I mean. I've been up there forty-three years, I won the land forty-four years. Right, and it was nice, country and everything, now it's more like an industrial park. Let's face it, Lockheed Martin doesn't care about us living. How much more noise is gonna come out of that building?
Well, that's one thing nice about this is that it's gonna be enclosed in that building and there's, uh, what do they call them, they call them, uh.
Boosting tiles?
Yeah, just baffle, adjusting baffles that'll actually go tight up around the laser that, uh, stand up, per, per truce on the side of the building, so. You're, you're just first noise, why you're gonna see noise of this one?
Right now, when I go to bed at night. Eric was talking about the humming sound. Basically, I don't have a TV or anything on, that's twenty-four seven in my house. You get that? Why should we have to put up with that? Why? We shouldn't have to, and it's gotten a lot worse, so that means that things have changed up there. Whether there, it's bigger units or whatever they're doing. We should not have to put up with that. No, I mean. Hey, I know it's a business and that, but also you people are gonna have to think about. People that live up there. Been up there a lot longer than Lockheed Martin.
Getting back to the, the concrete trucks and all that, uh, there will be, just like on the past project during construction. Definitely be concrete trucks going up there, uh, during the construction process, once, once the concrete, or once the work is done, the building's built. The concrete trucks later to that project, there's another thing going on, I don't know, but related to that project will not be going up.
I'm just saying, the last project, yeah, right here, said no concrete trucks. Only, only putting a topping on the blacktop.
He's being honest, there will be, because there is a building being. It's being up front and taking it that there's a building that will be built, so there will be materials delivered. There will be concrete for the foundation for that building. He's saying after the building's done, that you shouldn't see the concrete trucks anymore. So, um, on this one.
There's always a bunch of trucks running up and down that road. You know, passage.
I remember.
About the road. And, and.
I remember that.
Why should we have to pay to have the town come in every other year? Tar a little bit, oil in it and put more stone on it. And I've said before, my driveway right now is eight inches higher than what it should. Because of every other year the town coming in and putting a topping on it. And I also said the last time, why doesn't Lockheed come in here, donate a little money to put in a decent road? And not just stone?
Like that idea, you know, sidewalks, that.
I'm not asking for that.
I, I would, I walk the dogs down there.
I mean, you know, it seems like there should be a limit. On what a business can do.
Yeah, I will talk to B R about the, the, the traffic that's up there and. See if there's something different they can do, because it's, uh, it's pretty heavy traffic.
Is, is there significant wear and tear from Lockheed? Because if there is, then that might be reasonable to ask for them.
So you can see, you know, the road has got the dips from the weight of the trucks. Yeah, the road does have that, you know, the dips where the. Yeah, the road does have that, you know, the dips where the, they're, they're heavy.
I like that idea.
Yeah.
You can take that back to the powers.
Do some plantings and.
I'll take a school bus turn. That would just be goodwill.
Yeah.
Bad, and also if you, if they could do something with all that noise.
Yes. Thanks, Mike. Are there other comments for?
Just a thought, if, if they're, I'm sorry, Nancy Furdock, Sevi Road. Um, if they're putting sound deafening. Material in the new building, is there any reason they couldn't put sound deafening material into the existing building or buildings? Just a thought.
I think that's, I think that'd be the outside equipment.
Outside equipment, yeah.
Um, actually, right now, I think most of it's. In the dome, I believe, you know, the other one on the south side, this one side, I think that's. It's polished, I believe, but. I'll, I'll ask.
Yeah, so is that low frequency sound? If it is, I mean, I feel do anything about it that easily. Yeah, yeah.
Stan, you got any questions, or you're here for the next one? Yeah, the public comments?
I'm making a motion, we close the public hearing. Okay.
Motion by Kevin, second by Carol, all in favor? Public hearing has been closed, I ask one more question.
Oh, they wanted to start about a month ago, um. Like, get the same construction before the new year. So, hopefully fairly, fairly filled.
Because the last project. And said that, and I've asked the same question. And they said that we had to put it out for bid first. Within two weeks, the destruction stuff come off the road, so that's why I asked. How can you put out a bid and within two weeks, you already have the okay and everything?
On, on the private sector, things move much faster, I can't see that. You really do?
Yeah. All right, just. Motion, I'll make a motion. I make a motion that uh, we approve the one thousand and eight square foot building. At thirty-two fifty-four, Wendy Hill Lane, Compton, New York. One three one zero four, on tax ID zero one five. Dot dash zero two dash two two dot zero. Based on. C N S project. Five seven four dot one four zero dot zero zero one. Dated July twenty-six, is this the most recent one? July twenty-six, twenty twenty-three. And that should identify the project. Or the building of that. Enough? Okay, enough? Very good.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? Oh, it's all in favor?
I, I.
Any post? Motion carries.
That's it. This is.
It's a question? Oh, I think, it's just.
No, I, I think it's, reason is. If they're putting more things on that property. And next on our agenda, American Tower Site Plan Review. Public hearing for a site plan review on proposed construction of a standby eighty kilowatt diesel generator system. Automatic transfer switch, generator auxiliary power distribution, monitoring. Incursion circuitry for communication tower tenant. From there only, located at seventy-two oh nine Sever Road, Jameson, New York, one three zero seven eight. X I D zero one zero, that there zero three, that forty-eight dot two one. Do, Monica, do we have anybody to zoom in on that? Anybody here to represent them?
Did we tell her she probably didn't have to come? I, I don't.
Some, some reason I remember something like that. Cause this is a fairly simple.
It asks for a noise.
We asked for the noise and.
Yeah, because on, on their application, they cite three different, um. Actually, four different uh, enclosures, uh. Um, standard, an open set of standard enclosure, a level one acoustic enclosure and a level two acoustic enclosure, and I was gonna ask the question. Which one is gonna happen and what is the? Possible level that comes out of each of them? Yeah, that's, that's actually, it, it's on their plan, but it doesn't seem. Exactly, yeah.
But we can pick it.
I think we picked the level two. Yeah. Cause that's really the big issue on this, would be noise for the neighbors.
Right.
Yeah, in terms of visual or anything, I don't think there's any impact of what's already up there. Yeah, I think it says. Yeah, and cause that's the, that's the equipment they're putting in.
Over the border. Yeah, I mean, that's nice.
So they won't be able to approve anything tonight. Can't do secret.
Well, we can still open and close the public hearing, you know, we don't.
Did they give us the secret?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, maybe they did. What, what can we do off the. Well, we could make that a condition.
Give you any indication.
If it goes to levels two.
You're doing a seeker review of the environmental impacts, so if you feel like noise, something is an impact, and you don't know if it's going to be mitigated, and it's kinda hard to. If you deem it to be a significant impact.
Well, it's the only real impact, right?
Yeah, and those Generac um. Systems, they're, they're pretty quiet now, but.
There've been a test once a week, at least.
Yeah, so I, I, I would like to find out what the.
We can figure it out.
Dating test, probably.
The colleagues' comment of advice to consider noise effects on proposed.
Well, if you don't think it's a significant environmental impact, or then it can be mitigated, but you can't be. You know, then I think you probably do.
But how can, like, what is the, what is the noise impact? I mean, do we have any idea, or we're just guessing? Is that the problem?
There's one thing I couldn't decide that tonight, but I think, to me, that's the only, it would be the issue I can think of else.
We just have to approve seeker and seeker has noise in it.
Right.
So.
So, right, we can't say.
Unless it's just a matter of common sense, I don't know, I don't know it. What does our energy, our engineers say?
So. Is there anyone here that uh, gonna speak at the public hearing for the American Tower Site Plan Review? You are? Do you live up there?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
I, I would prefer to hold off on. Okay, so I make a motion to. Open tonight's public hearing on the American Tower Site Plan Review. Um, as we've indicated, we don't have a representative here. Thank you, Paul, favor open?
I just said, discussion first, um, so we're gonna open the public hearing. Are we keeping it open? Because we don't have the applicant here to answer some of the questions. So we'll keep it open till next time, when we have a applicant, okay, fair enough, then I'll say yes, hi.
Okay, with that, like I said, applicant is not represented tonight, so we will take your comments and concerns, but. The uh, public hearing will be continued in the next months and. We won't take an action, but we will take into consideration your comments. So Nancy, go ahead.
Nancy Furdock, Sevi Road, um, like you were talking about, the, the, the biggest consideration is the noise and potential air pollution fumes. Given off by the diesel, um, you're not gonna be able to answer my question, but uh, I know there's a neighbor. Or, or at least directly kitty corner their houses to that property and mine is. Several hundred yards um, to the north, um. I'm just concerned about wha- what are, what are permissible decibel levels? How often, you said they're going to be testing, is this just for? Auxiliary power, if there's outages, they're not gonna be running it all the time?
It's, it's a power backup, but. Is it once a week it's tested?
On the manufacturer's recommendation, it's how often it needs to be exercised.
Yeah, I know, we have one at the, been one at the fire department and it tests itself, I think, once a week.
How long does the test last?
It's not long, it's.
Five minutes.
Three, five minutes.
Yeah, five, ten minutes.
I'm just wondering, again, how loud are we going to be able to hear?
That's what we're gonna try and ask, and the other question I have is, if you had a choice being a neighbor. As to when they would run that test, cause I know they can run it anytime, would it be at noon or midnight?
Well, certainly not midnight, if, if, again, I mean, if it, if it's not going to be onerous, the, 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 the noise.
But you're probably gonna hear something. And I don't know if it's gonna be silent, but to me, you would pick a, a weekday for a test. You know, maybe in the middle of the afternoon.
Yeah, I would think afternoon would be best.
Two o'clock, three o'clock.
Certainly not early.
We could make that a part of the approval. Like, my neighbor's generator tests Saturday at noon, and I'm like.
Rather not be on a weekend. Um, and, and also the, the air pollution aspect, I'm not, I'm not sure what type of emissions these things give off. I'd like to have more details on that.
Yeah, and I think that is regulated.
It's a diesel engine that has to meet emissions.
Yeah, they have to meet emission standards.
Okay.
They're Volkswagen.
I'm, I'm curious, do we know why they? Want this now, like, it's, it's a, a new thing, I assume it's not replacing an existing one, why do they, why are they?
That's a good question.
That question.
Yeah.
Why did you know it? It's something that's already there and.
And have they considered solar power instead of diesel?
Just.
Wouldn't be enough.
It wouldn't be enough. Well, I, a question, um, I thought it said in the application. It wasn't just them that was gonna use it.
Well, it's all the, it's for all the users on the tower.
Multiple, so the multiple users on that specific tower.
Yeah, okay.
And then, um. Um, a- as far as uh, fuel storage, do you know how much? Fuel storage is going to be and, and what are the?
It's on the plant, it's all self-contained, it has to be.
I think it was a thousand gallon, was that what it was?
Pretty standard, yeah.
Yeah, and it's, it's actually the base of the unit is the tank.
The tanks, in a triple wall container, so there's no spillage, that's all regulated.
I assume if there was a spill, they'd have to report it to.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Okay, so yeah, really just the noise and the, the, well, even the air pollution.
Well, the, the other thing, uh, Nancy, is that on the fuel, it's a good point, is when the spills happen, but. They have to replenish the fuel and that would be a fuel truck going there to fill it up when it was low.
Yeah, I don't see that affecting anyone, there's a driver that goes straight in, um.
I don't think the driveway can handle a fuel truck.
Oh, really?
That's just me.
Well, most of the fuel trucks, like they deliver residential, they just drag a hose.
It's quite far back.
Well, they'd have to, that's a consideration, cause they have to put fuel in it at some point.
Well, when they go to put it in, they'll find out, you know.
That's construction.
Yeah, you have to drive the piece of equipment down there, so you must be able to get access to it.
That's a good question to ask.
They may need to improve their drive or something.
Stan, how well is that driveway maintained?
Towers aren't maintained too well in the winter. Used to know Bob White, who did the Channel Nine, the main tower there, and when he got buried, I'd go with my tractor and I'd blow and help him out. And then you don't see him up there off, I think it's basically that they need to do something, then they come in and plow. Which would be a concern. Do you want me to announce myself or?
Are you done? Next, anybody?
Uh, Stanley Gorman, seventy-one fifty-four Sever Road. Um, as far as maintaining the driveways, uh, again, I think they would probably have to do something, um, if they're looking at winter stuff and. Getting trucks in and out of there when they, they put up the tower. I think they, it was July, that's when they got approved. So summer is a lot different than the winters, everybody fills up there, I mean, that road, I've actually had to call the county because you can't. You can't get through it, and I've got a plow truck. And uh, just trying to get home, some nights I have to go back down to uh. And you wanna come up the other way.
But is this shared driveway?
Um.
For you and?
No, 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 it is not a shared driveway for me, I mean, all the towers, well, with the exception of the nine one one, which is kinda close to you. Um, I don't know if there's, that's a shared driveway there, uh, ninety-three, basically on the road. Um, this one is set back from the road, the Channel Nine is set back pretty good. The issue is dripping up there. Um, well, one day you get a snowstorm and everything gets buried up there.
Yeah, that's a problem for them or for how?
For everybody, I mean, i- it's, I mean, it's a county road, and this is what I found out too, it's a county road. Just short of my driveway. Okay, county road stops about thirty feet from my driveway, you can see there's a line that goes down to a line. And where that line stops is where the county road ends and the town road picks up. And when I first moved to the area, the town road actually stopped. Past my driveway, there's Larry Rose is my neighbor across the street and it stopped there and going down Sever Road. It's only open in the summer, uh, they came in, God, it must have been twenty-five years ago. To kind of level that thing over and made it a passable road through the winter.
But now with this diesel fuel operated generator, there's also a fire protection issue. In the, in the event of a fire, with a department, fire department be able to get access.
Well, it's, it's a big issue, whether it's the generator there or whether it's, it's Channel Nine, um. Let me just ramble on some of my notes, indulge me for a minute and then we'll kind of, I'd be happy to talk on this, um. My involvement goes back thirty plus years, uh, with these towers. I've lived on Sever Road since ninety-six. So, um, it seems we've had an issue with the towers, it goes in twenty year cycles. Um, they were built, Channel Nine was built, I believe in sixty-four, at a renovation, a big thing that. Eighties, I got involved around two thousand. Um, and that's where you see, uh, you know, I mean, I'm, I say I'm part of the. Um and that's where you see, uh you know, I mean, I'm, I say I'm part of the ECC, uh. I've helped with this tower overlay district, um I'm here tonight as more of a consensus. Has nothing to do with anything I've done for the town, um the law has been written, uh one sixty-five dash ten. That dates back about twenty years, if you see at the beginning of the law there, I was actually involved in helping write it. Uh so my concern is, this is just another. It's not just a fuel tank, it's another thing that's going up in the tower overlay district. Before we move forward, I'm asking you to take a hard look. Um at what we're doing to do due diligence to make sure that we are dotting our i's and crossing our t's when it comes to this law. Um and an issue, I mean, you know, when you you talk about the law itself, the general criteria, is it necessary? Um is there a shared opportunity, is there radio interference, fault zone, setbacks, lighting? Visibility and aesthetics is a is a big one, especially in this town, um when you talk about view shed. And then my biggest concern, and this hasn't happened, is anything being properly maintained and monitored up there. So this is just another thing that's going in, you all, I think, know what I do for a living, I run the Pompey Club, so. I saw Renee and she said you must be slowing down, yeah, um so here I am, sorry.
And you're you're also on the ECC?
Yes.
Do you get these and review these applications we have?
Not when it comes that we do solar. We do so.
Why aren't you doing the other applications that come before us?
I don't know.
We always did, every application was reviewed by the ECC.
Well, I here's, well, just to give you an example.
Just curious.
When this permit came in, um it was, uh. You know, July two thousand one or something like that, to put the original candelabry up here with T-Mobile on this tower. Um I mean, I'm a neighbor, she's a neighbor, nobody is notified, and. And I brought it to the board's attention and I was told, well, the power isn't being, the height of it isn't being changed and all of that. And that's why we weren't notified, the intent of the law was that anything that's going on up there, the neighbors should be notified, I mean. We were part of that, so to this, that was great that we got a letter letting us know that something's happening. But I mean, for my progression, I mean, this is the tower that's in question. I don't believe this tower was there twenty years ago, okay, and this is where we started in July. That's the candelabry that's up there now. Okay, those are cell, those are, this is all cell stuff, uh this is cell stuff. Um to give an indication, that's a little better picture of, well, to give you an indication. This is how big they are, that's a shovel standing next to it. So they don't look very big when you see them up there, that's how big they are. So to me, you know, I mean, there's some significant change there, this tower is the other cell tower, Horizon Tower. When that started twenty years ago, there was one candelabry on the top of it. Okay, now there's three. Um and again, it's a little closer look. So these are the changes, I mean, these are just cell towers, um that we've seen over the last twenty, twenty-five years. I mean, my concern is they're they're going in under the guise that, you know, this is routine maintenance and we have to do all of this stuff. To maintain our level of service, so again, is this generated routine maintenance? I would just ask, I don't know, I mean, the law, I believe, says the planning board is kind of the governing body here. Uh we've got a new co enforcement officer, it's doing a great job, but over tasked. Um I can tell you, I was promised by board members twenty years ago that these towers would be monitored. To date, I believe there was some sort of survey, Renee, maybe you can. Um back this up, I think there was a test that was done in two thousand and eighteen. Um it was a down and dirty test because I attended a board meeting this time of year, said, what have we done for testing? I'm concerned about what the towers are giving off. Um cell towers, radio towers, the TV towers, and most importantly, the Doppler. I got started because the Doppler went up in my backyard with no notice. And if you tell me that there's no harm there, then why does it have to be shut off if anybody's working on the towers? So that's my argument there, so I'm more concerned about what the towers are giving off, that's me. I've been involved with the town to work on assessments, um that's why I ask what what's happening over here. With the Lockheed Martin here, because we are raising the assessments, so whether you agree with me they're harmful or not, we're trying to get more money for town. Uh we think they're under assessed. But to my knowledge, since two thousand. And I've got it in writing, former board members, yes, we guarantee it'll be done, the town law says every six years that the town will do a test.
What what sort of the test?
Uh frequency test, what are the towers giving off frequency wise? The towers themselves, I believe the law says, again, um that they have to provide you. Every two years, like, you know, what we've done for maintenance, where everything is operational, I mean. I could walk into an towers property, no problem right now, there's a quantum of that, there's a. Abandoned tower that there's a handwritten sign for sale, um that you could walk in and out of. There's no incentive to take it down, I mean, that's why I got involved with the solar stuff, just to make sure that if we do have an overlay district. That there is, my kids and their kids don't have to worry about. It's left behind, so my concern that I bring to this board is, this is just another thing. Nothing's really the straw that broke the camel's back, but it's just another thing, and I'm asking before we move forward. On another thing, if we at least take time out for a little bit, I know in two thousand, we had a moratorium and I'm not asking for that. But just to take a look and make sure that, you know, these people are doing what the law says they're supposed to be doing.
Which is really the charge of our code enforcement officer and not this board.
Yes, but it also says the planning board is the one that, I mean, you guys are the ones that approved the tower, that candelabry that went up there.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and I knew nothing about it until it was already done, and I went to the town board because it was already done. Uh I'm coming to the planning board to ask now, because you guys are the front line, you're the boots on the ground, the first responders, whatever you wanna call it. And I just feel like there has been so much stuff that's gone up over the last umpteen years and more of it is with telecommunications. Cell phones.
Change in technology.
Five G, whatever it is, and so again, now, when you talk about that is the level of frequency, what they're putting out going up. I mean, I used to talk with Bob White, it's, yeah, I mean, there are certain times, go like this with that knob. And they're broadcasting a little bit stronger, a little bit further, all of this, and I mean, that's just. And.
I I looked at that data, yeah, uh we had the consultant come in, but um. And the the output was like ten time lower than the limit, so it was uh well below. Where it needed to be, which is a good thing. And so whether or not it's changed, I I don't really know, I don't know the things I've done.
Again, I I I agree that it is probably low, but. How are we monitoring them and and what is being done, I mean, as the law is written, that's supposed to be done, and if it's a code enforcement officer, then. I gladly work with him, I mean, Renee can attest, I've been trying to work with the town for years. Not looking at an article or whatever it is, I mean, I've certainly got recourse with some of the promises that were made, but no, I want. Love this town. I moved here, okay, that's why I'm staying here, that's why I raised my kids here, I do anything for it, that's why I'm involved. Um and.
You have to really look at the approvals, because I I believe the Indian Hill cell tower, it couldn't change the height. But they could add antennas. And that was in the initial approval, I I you know, a lot of these tower companies build the tower on speculation, they just throw a tower up. And then try and sell space on the tower.
And I and I agree, I mean, you know, but again, um you've got recourse in terms of visual. You know, aesthetics, um this sits above the tree line and now we have another candelabry. Uh okay, I mean, uh to give you an indication, where I got started, the tower across the valley was supposed to be right next to Channel Nine. With that candelabry on, but we're not yet, and we caused so much problem that they ended up moving it over there. That's my history in the town, and I and I just, um that's why I got involved with Renee, I've talked to a number of people that are in the industry. That will go nameless to say, well, just raise their assessment, and so we're trying to do things for the town. Which I agree with, but this is also in my backyard, um I'm also worried about, you know, we did studies a long time ago, the cancer rate. Around those towers is astronomical, you know, I I know I moved there and that's my. Whatever, but I also moved there with the speculation that we really wouldn't just keep throwing stuff up there. And and that's what I've seen over the last twenty years. And they come under, it's, I say, routine maintenance, but we have to put it up to get to this level of service, and we have to put this up to get to this level of service. That's why, you know, if Lockheed Martin's putting up a new laser thing, well, certainly, that's not cheap. So there should be some recourse to the town there, uh my concern is more, what are the towers giving off and how much monitoring are we doing? Thank you, I I go all night, so I appreciate it.
Thanks, Stan.
Any any questions, I'd be happy to talk and.
You gonna state your name, please?
It's not, no town supervisor. I used to be in this, I just wanna um sort of expand on what Stan was saying, because when I took office, he came. Very interested and um. And more not, because there had been news like, again, from code enforcement doing anything. Um this particular issue, so um we worked on it with him. Uh and created files, we got, we got files on every single one of those towers and what's. And and we reached out to each one of them, letters from our attorney asking them to. Um come into compliance with our both provisions as far as what they were supposed to be providing us. The only one that did answer was the Horizon Tower on Indian Hill Road, and they were very dignified because they were somewhat in compliance. They weren't, they weren't the problems, but the towers on um. So you're just thumb their nose, no responses, just at all.
Show them down.
So we, I went to the code supervisor, I went to the assessor's office and said, and this really stands branch out. You know, are they assessed properly, so we started to reassess them. The um for next year, the this year was the first year, Brian, and then last year is a successor, and it was just too much for him to take on, but this year. He looked at them, gave them, like, what they're really supposed to do is provide us with their financials. And then the code assessor can determine what kind of profit they're making, is it income based assessment or profit based? But they won't, they don't do it, so they won't give you their financials, so um. We have started to assess them higher. And we're going to see how long it takes before we get their attention, so that we can. Get from them the information that they're supposed to give us, they're so governed by the that's that, little town Pompey is that. Anything we ask of them, it it we're like a little flea that that's just buzzing around, they're they're not that. Um attentive to any requests we make, and so we've been working with Brian, that doesn't. Obviously, address Stan's concerns with radio frequency admissions and um. You know, the the extra things that are being put on these towers, because they're all been repurchased by companies that now lease them.
So here's a good place to start right now, is uh talking to American Tower about their generator and. And what what else, you know, get that other information from them while we're.
That's why I'm here, I mean, you know, it's a start.
Maybe it's something you want to kind of, I don't, tell them before you approve it.
You know what your admissions are and what, you know, what maintenance is.
The information she's asking for.
Are you sorry, you compliant?
Right.
And until you're compliant, we can't really help.
They don't even show up tonight.
Okay, okay, right, but clarification, town law, they're supposed to come back every two years?
I believe it's two years.
I think it's two years to provide us with uh um some indication that they've, that they have. Done the maintenance on the, and I haven't looked at this in.
And there again, why it's for the FCC regulations for emissions?
Yeah, whatever, maintenance, repairs, um whatever, but um and I don't know if they were supposed to provide us with radio frequency. Testing as well, I think so.
And so.
Uh the the intent of the law was yes.
Yeah.
And then we we did our own testing.
The test that was done in twenty eighteen, I think, twenty eighteen was done, and it's because Stan made an issue. For the town board and they didn't throw any money at it, so he did a very abbreviated version of what should have happened.
Okay, um so we can, so we can move along, can you look that up and then give that to me afterwards, Sam?
Yep.
So, um, okay, I am going to move that we continue public hearing, so next month's meeting, January twentieth.
I have a second conversation, I'm.
I I just, I just say, I I do wanna say that the position of this board is that they have reasonably asked. Within a reasonable timeframe, under the FCC regulations, for the noise generation. It has not been provided. So that the town does not have to make a decision. On this modification, until we get that information and that it is reasonable to request it.
Very well played.
Because if it is not reasonably requested, then it is considered and approved under the newest FCC regulations. There are regulations that that are very specific with respect to a minor modification. And whether this is considered a minor modification, but that we have requested this information and we don't have it, therefore. It needs to be provided and then we'll be able to act on this request on the modifications.
Okay.
All right. Next, on the agenda, I'll hand you subdivision. I appreciate your patience, Ken.
Sorry, I picked so long.
It's fine, it's fine, uh my name's Brad, I'm I'm a lawyer at the Kentucky Hughes, representing the uh. So this, uh is the initial meeting on this subdivision, which is to create a new lot. Uh on Ridge Road, south of uh number five, uh Road West. And uh this is currently a forty-one acre lot that we propose to buy, so that uh. Will be a nine point six acre lot, not thirty-one point six acre lot, I believe that uh both these lots say do comply with a. Regulations and uh there is no proposal for development of a of the new. You know, small smaller lot or or the big one, either, this is a intra-family transfer, uh and it's all like. Vacant land, you know, used for recreational purposes at this point.
This is an agricultural use.
I I know it's in the agricultural area, I don't know if it's actively farmed or not. I do not know.
I I ask that because, I ask that because it wouldn't be exempt from it, from requiring a public hearing if it's agricultural use. Because you can have two lots, you can have the two-lot subdivision for agricultural use, but if. If it's unknown, then it would ultimately never be wanted.
That I, my guess would have been that it's not farmed.
So it had to be actively or just itself?
No, it it's, well, our our code is ambiguous on that, but I would say if it were. For agricultural purposes that it was being subdivided, but okay, look, it's being honest and does not appear to be, that be the case, so. Um we would need to follow our subdivision regulations, it's a two-lot subdivision.
Yeah, so our hope was that it could be scheduled for a public hearing at your next meeting and. Really, I'm just here to see if you all have any questions and if there's anything else we uh.
So these quantities are hard to see, but is it like four hundred and?
I know it's a lot more than than two hundred. I can, I can easily find, find that.
Right, yeah, I've got.
Lots of division.
Yeah, it is, it's three ninety-seven and eight oh four. Yeah, it is. It's three ninety-seven and eight oh four. This is a separate. You know, or a soul, and I I do not know. I can try to find out. I don't know.
But that is this piece here?
It looks like there's an access, but if they have things. Some of their stuff on this property. That he cleans up in the same.
What is that?
What do you say?
So the frame shade is like nine point two feet over. Assuming maybe over the lot line. And then they talk a lot of civil markers, whatever. That's only. Thirty feet. I'm just saying that at this time, that'd be like.
Should we clean that? And to get it off and just let. Because the other thing, like you saw that other, or maybe you didn't, Brad, the. Last subdivision where we're like, listen, you can't, you can't drive, you can't do anything over there.
Right.
So it's like. You know, I don't know who friendly is. I don't know if it's part of the family, but it might be like, hey, you got to give it to them because it's such.
It's only thirty, thirty feet wide?
Wonder if it was for access to a field or something.
Like farming?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'd be happy to ask about.
It looks all.
Yeah.
Oh. Oh.
Is that a line or?
Do you know if this person is is one of the relatives who?
I'm not certain about that either, friendly. I know the the other smaller lot that's already there, Wasman, is part of the family.
Right.
But I'm not. Yeah, I'm not certain about that.
Is there anything on this lot, Wasman lot, Randy?
There's no, no structures on it.
Is she gonna end up with the land then or is it?
The the purpose of this subdivision is to. Give lot two to the nephew of the of the turret owner. It's not, the purpose of this of this subdivision that we're applying for now is to give. What will be, what will be lot two over here to the nephew.
Moving a lot line doesn't make any sense.
Well, you can't.
That's his daughter. She couldn't, if that was going to her.
No, it's a, it's a separate lot.
Okay.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Public hearing next month.
Public hearing next month. And then would you. Would you anticipate that I. Next month you could do seeker and and make a make a decision on subdivision?
That's unfortunate.
Very, very, very fair.
Brushing your t's, dotting your i's.
What about, so it needs to go to county, though?
I was wondering about that. I mean, I, I don't know that Rich Road is a county road. It is a county road. I think we did include a two thirty-nine.
Probably exempt, those exempt from the.
It might.
Don't you guys want to know if there's driveway access somewhere on the newly created lot?
You would have to, you might say that it's not a building lot if you move it.
So what we're doing is going from lot ones and lot two are one parcel.
Yes.
Yes. I think it would be good to find out. It's straight there, but it's. Is there an incline?
Do we know where it's gonna be? Well, you can't do site distance.
Well, a whole parcel could be fine.
It's got almost four hundred feet.
But there might be the whole, all four hundred feet might have state distance.
Right? So we'll ask the county to do that if they can do it between now and then.
Because this is definitely county road, Doc.
Yes.
So is that something you would do as part of the referral to county planning? Ask that question, or is that something we need to do?
We'll do that here, right? Site distance.
The county.
I think he would request it.
He would request that.
I'm confused. How come we have. Us requesting it for the other applications?
In the past, the apple camp has.
I'm I'm talking about lawyer tonight.
No, that one confused.
Well, I I just, I just think that we were trying to expedite and get what we needed.
But then we're gonna throw the burden on this poor gentleman so late at night.
Yeah, because it's late.
You're just confusing me.
So Broadfield is going back for site distance.
Yeah.
Right, but we're we're under the wrong, wrong impression.
Yeah.
As the lower, we thought the upper one was the one that was always on with site distance. It turns out it was a lower western.
Wrong impression. Or correct. But if we get all that done before next month.
So that's that's fine. So we will reach out to county DOT about whether there is a place.
A problem there.
That has. Right, whether there's site distance. And I will also ask my client about the possibility of cleaning out the shit.
Does not need county review.
It does not need county planning review.
Right.
Okay.
If they were gonna look at. One. Why, I assume just to look at both labs must have confirmed. What you say.
Site distance.
But why would you, yeah, why would you?
For the public hearing?
No, no, I just think we don't want. It depends. Subdivision is a reasonable. Development of land, right? You don't want to create it.
Send a letter on the name.
Is that our still our obligation?
Probably, okay. And you can get a list of them from.
He just can't. I know. My partner, Ed Spencer, has been talking to him. Yeah, I've got room for him tonight, so.
Should we have a sample letter?
He owes you big time, by the way.
Well, he's. He's the Fayetteville village attorney was covering their meeting and he's. He's done similar things for me when I represented mine.
Just remind you that it's nine thirty.
I'm writing an affidavit. The letter will send.
The letter was sent, okay. Okay, okay, all right. Thank you all.
Thanks for your patience. Make a motion.
I'll second a motion.
favor?
Babe, I have a question.
Even better, is the infancy meet?